Welcome to Cache County Council. I do that on purpose.
Thank you.
February 28th. Good to have all of you. Appreciate everyone that has showed up today. We'll have our first, an opening from Councilmember Barbara Tidwell.
Thank you. One of my favorite presidents is Abraham Lincoln, and so I was looking through some quotes of his, and I just found this one. I thought it was pretty funny. He said, "If I were two-faced, would I be wearing this one?" And I got a kick out of that. I'll finish my comments in the form of a prayer. Our Heavenly Father, we're grateful to Thee for this day. We're grateful for this beautiful valley that we live in. We're grateful for the water that we're receiving. We're grateful for those constituents who live in this valley and that we have the privilege to represent. Pray for Thy guidance that as we discuss the different issues that come before us, that we would look to doing what is best for them and for this county and for the future people who will be living here. We pray for Thy guidance this night, that we might have Thy Spirit to be with us and make good decisions. We're grateful for each other and for this, I'm grateful for the members of all of this council and their willingness to serve and for the many hours that they give to the county. We're grateful for our many blessings and all that we enjoy. We say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
If you would please stand for the Mledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you very much. We'll now accept the motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved.
Second. Moving second, we approve the amended agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? Proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Anyone been able to get through all the minutes?
Yes, I have one item on the very end. It shows that we went into executive session, but it doesn't show that we came out of executive session or who motioned that.
I'll make sure that that gets.
Okay, thank you.
Because I know we did.
Yeah, we did.
Weirdo's still there.
Okay, any other additions, deletions? Take a motion?
Motion to accept amendments, accept the minutes, but with the update of the exclusion, you know, the executive session.
There's a second.
Second.
Moving to second, we approve the amendments with that change. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Report of the County Executive.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, we're all very excited that the council passed the open space ordinance, and the County Executive, David Zuck, just asked me to pass on that he's excited to get, if we could, any recommendations for those appointments from any council members you can think of if you could pass those on. Additionally, we have an award that I just have, it's the Utah Weed Control Association. We just wanted to mention tonight that our weed board received, was the only, we received the Outstanding Weed Board Award for 2022. And I just want to read a little background about that. The Utah Weed Control Association, they held their conference this February in St. George, and they have been around, was organized in 1986. It was formed in order to bring weed control issues into greater light and provide a forum to address ways to improve the weed control in the state. This year, the Cache County Weed Board received the Outstanding Weed Board Award for 2022 at the UWCA Annual Conference, and this award just recognizes their hard work in generating an excellent educational and landover notification process. So we would just like to pass this on. We know we're actually having the Weed Board meeting tomorrow, and, Mr. Chair, we'd like to just pass that on to you. If you'd be willing to be excited about that and present that tomorrow in the meeting, that'd be great. I'm entrusting that to you tonight, and.
Everyone else excited about weed?
I was thinking they should put noxious weed.
Noxious weed. There you go.
I was just going to say, I have a lot of outstanding weeds in my yard.
That's why we have, we got it for you, so.
That's all we have tonight. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. I know that department is well-deserved, that they are basically the epitome of what a weed board and what weed program for Cache County. They're always looking to Cache County to see how things are done. They do well, so. Okay, Chief Hammer.
Mr. Chairman and councilmembers, thank you for this opportunity. We've got an award to present, Paramedic Scott Best. It's called the Supervising Fire Officer Designation Award, and I'll read the blurb that they give us to read. Paramedic Scott Best has been awarded the Utah Supervising Fire Officer Designation. This designation is achieved by documenting a comprehensive body of career development, classes, higher education certifications, competencies, and experiences based on criteria developed by the International Association of Fire Chiefs. This program was then adopted by the Utah Commission on Fire Officer Professional Development. Paramedic Best has demonstrated his commitment to his professionalism and self-improvement by following an ongoing path of professional development. He has fulfilled hundreds of hours of training, education, and experience to meet the requirements needed for this award. Please join me in personally thanking Paramedic Best for his hard work and dedication to such valuable program and to serving the firefighters of Utah.
Would you like to give a speech?
No, not really.
I didn't think so. I pretty well think the award speaks for itself. We appreciate you for that, but I didn't want you to, you know, take that opportunity from you.
I'm perfectly fine.
Oh, you're a good man. Thank you, Chief Hammer. We appreciate that. Well, now we're at plenty of time before we sit public hearings, so let's go ahead with Sean Bushman, Cache Valley Transit.
Thank you. My name is Patrick Jenkins. I'm chairman of the Cache Valley Transit District Board. Am I out of place? Is this what you were expecting right now?
Yes, this is Cache Valley Transit District.
Just wanted to make sure.
They have Sean Bushman on here, so.
Sean's not here, and, you know, just point of clarification, this council appointed a representative, and Sean's probably en route here and will come busting in quickly, but Sean is your representative. There are 19 members of this board, and each of them represent a portion of the service district. So, for example, I represent Logan, and should he come, we'll give him a little bit of time, but I appreciate you giving us a little audience today. One of the things we encourage all the board members to do is come back to their respective council members or boards that they report to and just give an accountability report. What are we doing? What are we trying to achieve? And I think this has been a great year, especially a rebound year since COVID. We have utilized a lot of technology to provide more transparency, more accountability for what the Cache Valley Transit District is doing with sales tax dollars that it's afforded. If, on your own time, you go to cvtdbus.org, you will see how many people, how many rides occurred yesterday. So, for example, 4295 was yesterday, which is a huge jump from our COVID days where we were about 1,000 to 1,500, and it might even be past where we were pre-COVID or right at that point. So we're excited that it's providing a valuable service to a lot of members of this community. Really, there are two segments of the population it provides. It is a, it is an economic development tool. We get people to good services and products that they need, but if we're candid about it, it's an access tool. We get, we get poor people to work. So people that otherwise would be a little disenfranchised because of ability to drive or ability to get transportation, get to participate, and enjoy a quality of life that may not be afforded to them and allows them to contribute back to this great community. So we appreciate the support we've had. One thing I did want to draw your attention to is on March 7th at 11:00 a.m., we'll do a sixth, thank you. We've got to keep these people quiet. I want to do it on, March 6th at 11:00 a.m. is a groundbreaking for our new facility. Our new facility is basically a very large service center. It's all of our office equipment, excuse me, our office space. All of our headquarters will be moved to this new facility, so each of you have been individually invited to come and participate in that and learn more about what that is and what it entails. So we're very excited and grateful for the support, for the support from the Cache Valley Council. I entertain any questions? None? Okay. Yes, Mr. Governor?
What's the highest number you've had in a day? And was yesterday high because of snow or what?
You know, Todd, our CEO of Cache Valley Transit District here, do you want to speak to that? Because I don't do statistics.
So I think, I think weather does play a role in things, both in good and bad. Sometimes there's folks that don't want to wait in the weather, and so they may drive, and then we have folks that don't want to drive in the weather, and so they ride. One of the things our board chair alluded to is the fact that we've embraced technology. So we now have an app that shows buses in real time where you're at, so people don't have to wait so long out in the weather, and so we see more ridership because of that. We get a lot of compliments on the fact that the app is real time and people can, can use that. Pre-COVID, we tracked trips, this is a long explanation, but, so around 6,500s probably are high, but we purposefully just, we didn't know COVID was going to happen, obviously, but at the start of 2020, in response to requests we've had from riders and just overall planning transit better, we created the loop, which hit 60% of the major destinations in our service area with no transfers. So people don't have to go and transfer to another route. And the way that the national standard is for tracking trips, that every time you transfer, that's an additional trip. So we purposefully made a decision that would reduce the number of trips that we provide. So we think even though the number were 52, 55 highs now are where we're at, we're probably really close to that 7,000 because we're doing a lot of service on the loop routes, the green and blue loop. They're our highest-producing routes, but we know that they're not making people transfer. So that's a long answer to your, your question.
Okay, thank you. Other question? Is there a break-even ridership? That you kind of look at saying, hey, we got to be at least this level to really, even though it's all free, I guess, or is this, I'm sure you're.
It's not free. Let's never call it free.
It's not free.
It is, it is a sales tax-generated service.
Right. So it's, 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 once you pay your sales tax, then there's a benefit.
Yeah, so you ask a really great question, and one of the things that we're trying to do is utilize that, that technology to make the whole system far more efficient, effective. So there's not exactly a break-even, but what we cannot tolerate, we hate seeing those big empty buses driving around, just doing loops. And so one of the services that we've tried to engage to bring down the break-even cost of the system is our pool system, which is servicing Cliffside, River Heights, Providence, Millville, and it's a quasi-on-demand service. It still runs those same, same service routes, but doesn't run it until it's summoned by the app. So I can't answer that number question of, of where's the break-even on it, but I can say we're doing everything we can to bring the cost of operating the system down, but it's exactly like designing a highway. How many lanes do you need? Do you design it for the most efficient time, the most effective time? You kind of try to balance the entire thing, and that's what I hope we're achieving at Cache Valley Transit District.
What's the projected cost of the service center? Every year it's been going up because everything has been going up.
Well, we're locked in on a price. We have a guaranteed maximum price, so it's roughly $46 million. But yes, when we first started designing that two years ago, that number was significantly less. We've seen the 35% cost escalation that most places are.
I hope you can even get all the equipment for it, too.
That's including the equipment we need, yeah.
Yeah. Great questions.
Yeah.
Other questions? Thank you very much.
Actually, sorry, I do have a question. Just the appropriations that came out on Friday, did that affect you guys? Did they take, they took away quite a bit, didn't they?
Yes. So our appropriation request wasn't funded to our knowledge right now, so it affected us. Back to the drawing board, sharpening the pencil.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's like species extinction, adapt or die, so we'll just adapt, right?
Okay, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time.
Yep. Okay, let's go ahead with the tax relief. Diana, Dr. Schaefer, what do you want to be referred to at?
Schaefer's good.
Okay.
Is it out of order for me to suggest an amendment to the agenda on points eight and nine? The A and B, those just need to be reversed because tax relief is going to be tax relief report, the Board of Equalization or the exemptions, which are the religious and charitable. How do we go about that, Dave?
I see, so the tax relief should be under eight.
Correct.
Yeah, so nine A, B, under tax relief. And A and B should Board of Equalization, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, with that, I think we, we need to, you know, with that.
Do you have to make a motion or?
We ought to make a motion. Is there a motion that we, go ahead and change this?
So moved.
Second.
Is moving second that we change the amended agenda for approval to the following changes of under eight, A and B will be moved to nine A and B, and nine A will be moved up into the tax relief section. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks for bringing that up.
You're welcome. And so thanks for reviewing what I've submitted for the council's review. So under eight, we have the tax relief report, which is basically all of the tax relief that was approved for the 2022 year. Most of that is statutory. The indigent, those are the ones that actually have to come before the council. So we have $1,268,787 that was awarded in tax relief last year. About, just under 72% of that was for our veterans, the 905,000. But do any of you have any questions about that report?
I do. Can you explain what circuit breaker refers to?
Circuit breaker is a nickname for what is known as the homeowner's abatement. So they call it a circuit breaker because if you switch two circuits, which are 66 and older, and they meet the income requirement, those switches fall, and then by statute, they're awarded that benefit, which we do receive back from the state. The other component of that is the 20% that you see on that, the cover sheet, that comes out of county coffers.
That 2,000, well.
The, the 20% is 131,134. The 126,000, that's what we get back from the state, once the treasurer submits for that.
Thank you.
Good.
Other questions? Now, these, we have been actually, we've been approving, approving several of these as we've been going through 2022, right?
As we came through 2022, what you see under indigent, which is 4,816, those have to come. Those are entirely at the council's discretion. Like I say, veterans, circuit breaker, 20%, those are all required under statute.
I'm, I guess I'm getting to the, I believe we already approved those, so, and that was done by a motion.
By the council, the indigence.
Are there any then? I think that the others are just basically statutory, so we don't have to.
Correct.
Have a motion for those.
So this, so the report is basically the legislative body ratifying those monies that were awarded and being informed of what our arm of government is doing.
So we're, we're complete on the council's approval of those, right?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions then? If not, then we'll go ahead and I'll entertain a motion that we go into the Board of Equalization.
Do we want to approve, a motion to approve the report or?
I think we, yeah, that's what I was asking, but I thought we'd already approved all of those.
Well, just, just the indigence, so then we're, we need to approve the, the numbers that were.
Back up there.
If you're.
Taking a look at that, what do you, what's your pleasure as a council?
I move that we approve the religious and charitable report. Is that right?
Actually, it'd be the tax relief.
Tax relief report, yeah. Now I'm mixed, okay. I move that we approve the tax relief report.
Second.
Moving second, we approve the tax relief report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I'll entertain a motion to go into Board of Equalization.
So moved.
Second. Moving second that we go into the Board of Equalization. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
So moving on with.
Explain on that.
With our exclusive use exemptions, which do fall under Board of Equalization, so what you have before you is probably about 30% of those that are going to come to us, so you'll probably see me for the next two meetings as we move through all of them. The first 21 are religious exemptions. They should be pretty straightforward. There's a lower threshold for them to meet in order to be awarded the exemption. Any questions on any of the religious?
We will, in, in this packet, Micah, we need to go through and change the eight A that we have in the packet so it reflects what we're doing today. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, any questions on those? I'll entertain a motion to, there was always one, and I couldn't find it, and I didn't dig into it that deep. There was one that had a portion of the building.
We have, yeah, the Episcopal Church is a mixed use where they have that, the one building, but they rent it to the charitable organizations, so I've received their application. You'll be seeing it on the 14th.
Okay, that one's coming later, because I couldn't.
Another interesting point is I just received, if you, some of you will remember, a residential that was trying to get, they're coming at us again, so. Same circumstances, we won that at state, but they probably won't come till the 28th.
Any specifics on those questions? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion.
Do we want to talk about the three, we have three low-income.
Yes.
That are on there.
Could you bring those up? Because they're.
I have one question, Don. Back to the religious. These have a history, or any of these new, only the one you're talking about, the residence one? So all of these have been coming and.
These are all repeats. Yeah, I'll identify them as new for you, as I come before you. You bet.
Yeah, so we don't, I guess, approve all of them, the religious and the charitable. Go ahead and talk about, bring on the charitable.
So in addition to the 21 religious you have before you, we also have three low-income housing, which they all will have included their gift to the community. Since they're charitable, they need to show that their contribution is greater than their tax liability, and I believe that all of them have done that. An interesting note on low-income, I know Carl's had some questions about these guys over the years since they're, you know, nonprofit, we have a lot of bringing in money. So there's a bill on the floor, HB 231, that is going to bring a lot more of these to our door, and it will, it will spell them out specifically in statute. If you know, in the synopsis that I wrote up for you, I include case law, so we have case law that we can stand on right now when we approve them, but I think moving forward, I'm not sure if it's retrospective, but probably next year, they'll be. The low-income.
So for the patients that go in here, there's not correlation of Medicaid and these being in the low-income, is there, or is there not?
It seems like, and I didn't bring the entire packet with me, but, that you have before you, but some of them provide low-income housing for the disabled, for instance. That's the closest medical correlation I can draw off the cuff.
By social security standards?
By, can you restate?
Social security disability, is that?
That would be probably social security disability. And so when you look at their gift, it's like they, they charge them less than a market rent, and that is their gift.
It seemed like 30% on a couple of them.
Yeah, and there's some of it, some of it is geared more towards elders. One of them was. And so those people are on fixed incomes, so for the community to have this low-income housing is an asset for us, I think.
The senior housing one.
I think there's a senior housing one, there's one that's the, for disabled, and I'm can't.
Spring Hollow.
Spring Hollow, that's our newest one. This is the second year that they've come before us. The other two have been coming for years. Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Clerk auditor, have you seen all these? Have you gone through them, too? Verified them? Okay. Any questions?
Okay, then I'll make a motion that we approve all of those items on, for the Board of Equalization.
Second.
Moving second that we approve all of the presented items for, on the, on tonight's Board of Equalization. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You did great work. Very detailed.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Super glad I beat the public hearings. I'm ready.
Okay.
Does that mean you're leaving us?
Me?
But I think that we'll be fine to go ahead and set these public hearings. It's estimated at 5:30, so we have a one, two, three, four, public hearings to set. Who would like to venture?
Do we need to close the Board of Equalization?
Oh, yes, we do. Good, thank you. Yes, take a motion.
I would move that we close Board of Equalization.
Second.
Moving second that we close the Board of Equalization. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Therefore, let's, I'll entertain motions on the public hearings.
All right, I'll move that we set public hearings for March 28th on Ordinance 2023-08, and set a public hearing for March 14th, 2023, for Ordinance 2023-09, set a public hearing for March 14th, 2023, for Ordinance 2023-10, and a public hearing for March 14th, 2023, on Ordinance 2023-04.
Second.
Moving second, we set those following, public hearings for Ordinance 2023-08 on March 28th, 2023-09 on March 14th, 2023-10 on March 14th, and 2023-04 on March 14th. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? Proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Complete, done. Let's go to the pending action. Down on 11A. Let's see. Dr. Watkins.
I'll just be set up here in just a moment. You have the.
No, I'm still reading Stokes' thing, so.
Well, good to be with you again. Appreciate the opportunity to work through potentially some additional details, potential refinements or modifications to the draft comprehensive general plan update. Last meeting, there was a request by Councilmember Hurd to. Last meeting, there was a request by Councilmember Hurd to consider some additional refinements, and so we had the opportunity to meet and explore, and these are. They're also available to anyone that can find the link on our development services website to see the latest draft documents. And so these are highlighted as potential refinements, and, and part of what we explored was the potential to add information to especially the regional collaboration plan, and to make clear, through the general plan adoption, that the regional collaboration plan could have additional information added contextually from communities. And so I'll just talk you through some of the word refinements that could make this clear.
Yeah, there is a glare on the, on the.
Text a little small.
The chandelier is bringing a little glare on us up here.
Alrighty. So here, for example, in the general plan, is a suggested edit on page twenty-one.
There you go.
Thank you. Sorry, Tim. Oh, no problem, thank you. So this is page twenty-one, relationship with the cities, where just a subtle word choice changer to, in the third paragraph, last sentence, to that end, the future land use map, instead of say categorizes, could say references probable growth areas, and this is speaking of these probable anticipated growth areas around communities, which the county's not stating a policy that that's where the cities will grow, it's just anticipating that's where they are likely to grow, and the, cities may want to update those contextual growth areas, and so if it suggests, or if the wording states that the future land use map references these probable growth areas outside of municipal boundaries in order to coordinate appropriate development patterns, rather than to guide. So that's putting it more into the policy of the cities to establish those areas, even though we've taken our first best shot at what those might look like, and that those could be updated. And so here, for example, could be a note on the map, the suggested edit, that this map, the future land use map associated with the general plan, should be updated to reflect changes to municipal boundaries, annexation policy plan areas, and urban expansion overlay areas, again, it's these possible growth areas, when such changes are initiated by a community. Updating this contextual data does not require an adopted amendment to this map, or any reference mapping associated with the regional collaboration plan. So in other words, we're not setting those policies for the counties, or, excuse me, the cities, but if they provide updates, then those could be shown contextually with the future land use map of the county, and, and, you know, this gray area being the, the actual municipal boundary, and when an annexation occurs, that gray area will be updated and expand, and do we want to amend our general plan every time that happens? It seems unnecessary. Uh, we're getting a little further into this, page twenty-seven, this is a description of that urban expansion overlay, and it seems helpful to provide another note, that as communities may provide additional information, these reference areas may be updated on the future land use map without an adopted amendment, to reflect the probable expansion of services within a ten-to-twenty-year timeframe. And then, I think to the heart of the question posed a few weeks ago was, what about annexation agreements? And I think that's a very good example of the type of documentation that if and when found and encouraged to be located, should be placed in an easy-to-find location that, for example, new planning commissioners, new council members, mayors and so forth, city staff can find easily and see in context of regional collaboration mapping. And so this possible edit on page one of the regional collaboration plan could suggest, or could contain this additional text, that this document, regional collaboration plan, could be supplemented by additional mapping and references to access adopted community plans, regional plans, annexation agreements, or other relevant information to facilitate coordination of local and regional planning issues and topics. So regional collaboration plan, it sets, sets the stage or the table to dine and to talk and, and, but more information can be referenced. And then finally, just this, this note, that the urban and rural area assessment and cost of services plan, and these are the studies that provide reference information to the regional collaboration platform, that these examine alternatives for providing government services, not to suggest levels that the government should adopt, but alternatives that they might consider. So, we really appreciate a staff, the question, and it's given an opportunity to go in with a finer tooth comb and share these potential modifications with you, invite any feedback.
These do provide some, some, I think, important clarifications on the plan, in case there's any, what?
Ambiguity.
Ambiguity, yeah, going forward. And I think this is interesting, because yesterday in our audit committee meeting, Kate Becker, who's been auditing the, a lot of the things in the county, found things passed clear back in nineteen eighty-six, we haven't updated, and haven't looked at, and haven't followed through with, and so these kinds of things, these changes, I think, will help defray that as being a problem in the future.
If I could just add that, we, we presented in previous hearings and, and work meetings, that this GIS story map format, it's a wonderful new way to publish documents and provide any kind of link, or gallery, or link to a database, or pull up these documents, so that this could be the place, this regional collaboration mapping, where anyone from a, a city or district could know that this is a place to go and find documents, rather than looking in this recorder's office or that, and it'll be a work in progress, but I think will facilitate that type of coordination and awareness of past policies.
Tim?
Yes.
On one of your slides, it was talking about private property, go back one, no, keep going, it was talking about private property and how that's governed by the municipalities and the county and the elected officials, I want to read that more.
Okay.
You had it up, and I didn't get it all the way read. Not there, it's broader one. Go again. There. Third paragraph down, planning on private property in cash counties undertaken by the county's nineteen communities and the county through their elected and appointed officials and staff to establish vision goals, objectives, policy, and land use regulations. Currently, the land use subdivision and access management regulations are the primary tools the county uses in land use planning in unincorporated area. Bringing up private property, I'm just hoping we focus on the private property and the private property rights as we're dealing in there. Is that taken by others, or, do you see what I mean there?
Yeah, and I, I will just, not to interrupt the discussion, but there are other references that I, I could pull up in other places in the plan that do make it clear that private property rights matter, and they're, they're to be respected, so, but if this paragraph could use some further clarification, be happy to.
Well, I appreciate you bringing out the private property, but I just want to emphasize that that private property has private property rights, in addition to these communities and the county and the elected officials, I always want to maintain the private property rights at almost the top of the level of importance. It's my feeling.
Okay.
I certainly agree, I don't see that this paragraph has any conflict with property rights, given that that's a federal and state-forged code, and, yeah, I think what Tim is saying is it's inferred that that is our policy, is to uphold the law, so, I agree with you, Nolan.
This is not drafted perfectly, but something to this effect could be worked into that sentence, that paragraph.
I mean, even if you just put a parentheses, private property, such as private property rights, or whatever, or something, I don't know, I'm just, I get very careful and cautious when we start talking private property and, and elected officials and stuff, of what's going on in there, so.
Something like this.
Yes, something that refers to it, makes me happy, so.
It's quite an experience to draft a document in front of a council and an audience, but.
Very good at it.
I know, you're doing great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Those are the refinements that, that were drafted and brought for you, I don't know if there are any other topics or details.
Page twenty-six. We had several suggestions on that, remember we talked about on page twenty-six, that it was really kind of some harsh language that said this is law?
Oh, yes, let me bring that up.
Last time, right?
Yep, but happy to review that again. Appreciate the reference to the context of that. As a very important edit. Appreciate your patience, I think I'm close. Here we go. Is this, is it this page six?
Yeah, I remember looking at it, it was page twenty-six, was what I looked at at one time.
And that might have been a PDF page, rather than the.
Could be.
But this is what's coming to mind, is the, the concern that we wanted to take out this outdated reference to nineteen ninety-one State Enabling Act, that mandated consistency, and it does not, that's, that's outdated, and so it changed to state that it provides guidance for potential county code amendments. I'll double-check page twenty-six, if I may.
Well, I'm reading the last two sentences, and I like that, while the general plan does not automatically change code, it is not regulatory, it is an advisement, advisory policy document. But, up there in the highlighted yellow, this should be used as a decision-making tool, so.
That's, that's pretty, we wanted to have some meat to it, but I, I hate for people to come in to the development services and be told, you can't do this because of the general plan.
Well, and, back to what started interrupting, but Sandy and I attended a land use thing, and you look at TDRs and what the impact of those do, and they don't, as I understand, recognize zoning as what the municipality is doing, that's a, that could be a circle there, as you go around on the TDRs and what the community has, because I, I actually, since that meeting, have talked to two city managers, and they're like, flip. We've got all this work to put in a zoning, and then the TDR comes in and it transfers as who's the receiving and the sender, if you're the receiving, that kind of changes what's going on in zoning, so.
Yeah, it really comes down to the, the details of that, and certainly, an inter-jurisdictional TDR program between county and city requires even more coordination and detail of, of the zoning range, is what I took away from that training, is it could be as low as this or as high as this, but if it's just rezoned without the TDR transfers, then it, anyway, that's a lot of detail there, but.
Can we take the pirates' method and use it as a guideline, rather than a decision tool, or what?
I'm sorry, take the what?
The pirates' method. It's a guideline, rather than decision. I don't know, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
When I read the highlighted, based on the last two sentences, just so they merge and don't conflict each other.
Mr. Chair, I could propose a quick edit that might help that.
Go ahead.
Instead of a decision-making tool, you can replace, replace decision-making tool with the word resource.
I like that.
That's it.
Resource and guidelines, very close.
Just a resource and look to, yeah, yeah.
Good word, Derek.
Okay, I'm just going to get a line out.
You earned your half cup of treats tonight.
Look in there.
Well, your half got eaten at the first meeting that we had.
I was thinking there was budget cuts, and it's pretty bad, man, when my treat cup goes down.
Well, you're only here for halftime.
Yeah, I'm still hungry, so if I've been here full-time.
Pull those other M and Ms that have been in there for four weeks, you can have those.
There's an expiration on some of those things, I think.
Other questions?
Thanks for doing that, thanks, Tim, appreciate it, that's, that makes me happy, those things there.
Hey, there is one more, one more theme related to this.
Okay.
And these are those seller, accessory dwelling units, ADUs, and how they're affecting. We talked a lot about that, and there is some deep concern, because it is in our general plan, to, some of that is used to help compensate, you know, the, the growth and the affordable housing and all that, but yet, I know in our fire board meeting that we had, we talked about it, and it's, can create a huge, we got to figure out some sort of process or address it in here, that we have some sort of method to, you know, make sure that there's guidance in all of it, that it's, that it's transparent, that we are doing this with safety, or whatever it may be.
I still hope we're studying the ADUs, because I've been reading other communities and what they're doing to meet that moderate income level, and there, there's a lot of different ideas besides ADU. When you talk ADU and put that out in the unincorporated county, it has impact on roads, it has impact on the fire groups, it has impact on density, back to that private property right, I mean, that's his property right, but it's been stated, well, we've only had two percent ask for it. Before Tesla was created, how many people were asking for an electric car? Soon as it came out, how many people asked for an electric car or a Tesla? Went up. So you throw an ADU there, I believe your demand or requests are going to go up, and we need to study what that impact is going to do to us.
Certainly. The general plan pretty much states this, to consider allowing accessory dwelling units by right within water service areas, we could tweak that language, or it's at least a consideration, and of course, our code currently allows.
Can we refer to the moderate income housing plan that the county comes up with, rather than stating accessory dwelling units? I mean, if we state there's a moderate income housing plan that the county's working on, we've got to work on it, but to me, it doesn't have to say accessory dwelling units, does it? Because there are other ways of meeting that moderate income housing level.
Could you say, consider allowing accessory dwelling units, or other, I don't even, can't think of the word, but other tools that would be determined in our moderate income housing plan, you know, list, say, you, you don't, or just take out ADUs and just say, consider allowing those things that are identified in the moderate income housing plan.
Yeah, we're getting closer.
Consider options allowed in our.
Moderate income housing.
A moderate income housing.
Other than saying ADU specifically.
Rather than ADUs.
And then that can be defined and refined in our moderate income housing plan.
We just don't want every barn renovated into a, what, Airbnb, you know?
Barn dominium.
Tim, can you tell us what, I know the state, I'm, I'm just so much more familiar with Logan Cities, planning and zoning, but we were mandated by state to allow ADUs with certain restrictions, what are the, what are the mandates in the county?
My understanding is that we are required to have at least an internal accessory dwelling unit, and that we cannot regulate the size of it, if it's within the footprint.
Be attached.
Be attached, and internal, we differentiate, or we, we've talked about differentiating between internal, which would be above or under the footprint of the home, whereas attached, we could regulate the size, because it's not tied to that footprint as much. Not required to necessarily have attached, but internal we are, and so that's where the. And so that's where the code update is necessary, is to take out the thousand-square-foot maximum size that's currently in our code. But we don't have to do attached. We currently allow attached and we don't have to do detached. We've looked into Box Elder County's accessory dwelling unit ordinance and they originally allowed for detached only and did not allow for internal. And they had to update their code to also allow for internal. And they've had a few applications in the past few years.
So we're in the process of refining that within our county code?
And, yes, and we understand that we should bring this as a joint work meeting item between council and commission.
Okay. That being said, would it be good for us to carry this general plan into this work session and get something scheduled the next couple, within the next couple of county councils?
Well, does the moderate income housing plan have to be real, attached to this, or can we pass this?
Yeah, it's separate.
In separate.
Could be amended again in a matter of weeks as we continue to study moderate income housing.
I like the things that we've done. I think we've done a really good job. I'm pretty comfortable with this and that moderate income housing plan and the ADUs that we would do separately might not, it might not be a good thing to hold this up.
Well, but if we have what the chair is representing, we could have Matt Phillips, we could have the fire chief, we could have those who have some input as to what it affects the county and how we're doing this. I think we should hear those.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, may I speak as the interim director of development services? Is that all right?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
We've brought this to you and we're asking that it be passed tonight after two years plus of consideration. So we would appreciate your passing, brought to you, and then you can always update it, you can always add to it. In fact, I was thinking, I wrote a note to talk to Tim about how easy is it for citizens to access our general plan? And making sure that our website includes addendums and things like that, we've talked about. But humbly, as, as the director, we would ask that it be passed.
Okay, so two years versus two more weeks or whatever for, I don't know, can I ask Matt to say if he wants input on this?
Yeah, you're welcome to ask him.
Matt, do you have input on what we're looking at on this road division, given our road manual and everything else and also the fire chief?
For the general plan, I'm not necessarily that concerned about it. I think that goes into our code, our codes and our ordinances and how we process those and what it's allowed and not allowed. There is some of this that talks about decision, guiding decisions and, you know, there's stuff in the code that says as long as it's in the general plan. But generally, I'm not necessarily concerned about the general plan as much as I am what our code will allow. And we're doing those hard developments when someone comes in for a zoning clearance or a building permit.
And that's where I, and I think the chair, sitting here saying, is will the general plan morph into code or whatever else if we've got dwelling units in there? I want to see how that's being done.
And it may, but, you know, some of our, where our zones are, what our roads are, our transportation master plan, you know, everything kind of ties together. And so, you know, I think if we find some glaring mistakes, maybe we do come back and do some amendments and some edits, but my opinion is that I, I know it's not perfect, but if we get it, it's been a long time since we've had a general plan. It's, it's, in the code, it's called the comprehensive plan, so it's just kind of, let's, let's get something. And then I think in our work sessions, if we're finding some things, maybe we do edit it, but I don't think, it's not code yet, right? And hopefully, we won't make it code. It's more of to guide decisions, help the council, help the planning, help, if you're gonna go buy land, you don't, you don't wanna buy it in an industrial area if you plan on building houses. So I think it's good direction for where the county's moving, but I'm hoping that this doesn't hold our feet to the fire. If it does, then, yeah, we need to. If this holds our feet to the fire and allows ADUs and doesn't address transportation needs, then yes, we do need to put the brakes on it, but I don't.
Two instances there. For instance, if we allow a subdivision and they put five or less homes in there, the road manual says this type of road.
Correct.
So I got a person who puts four houses in, all four of them decide to do an apartment or a dwelling unit. It has doubled the impact on that road, but we haven't assessed it. The other thing that comes to my mind is in planning and zoning, when a citizen comes in, builds on a road that's not built up, but then we as a county say to them, you've gotta pay to improve this road. If I'm looking at that, the first thing I'm gonna think about is if there's a dwelling unit, I'm gonna throw in a second thing to help me pay for that road because now I got another income source. So to me, there is impact there.
Yeah, and I, and maybe I'm mistaken because I haven't spent as much time on the general plan as I may have liked, but I don't believe, I think all the things you just mentioned, Nolan, can be handled at the engineering level and at the zoning clearance and the development review level. You know, the, your example for the road manual, it talks about trips, so as we're estimating those homes, if they're coming in with an ADU, we're gonna estimate those trips as higher than we would a single family home. So, you know, we, we, each home is about ten trips per day or an ADT of ten. So when we, in our road manual, we say fifty, so however you get to fifty, that could be five homes, but that could be one commercial, that could be one, it could be whatever combination gets you to fifty, but after fifty, you're going to have to increase the road size and the, and that's for private, so, you know, but. So there is some, there is some things that we need to consider there because if someone approves a subdivision and they haven't planned for, you know, your example, five lot subdivision, and they haven't planned for an ADU on every one of those, that subdivision's not gonna work very well because they, they're not gonna have the space, they're not gonna have the road, they're not gonna have the power, they're not gonna, so, but I do think a lot of that comes down to our ordinances and our regulations that we work with our planning and zoning and also our road manual. So I do, I would, I would encourage us to all take the ADUs very slowly, but I don't think that the general plan is gonna have as much effect on those as, as our code and our ordinances and our processes internal to development services and the planning and zoning commission approving those, so.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask?
I was hoping you would.
So I think I agree with Matt on the general plan as a standalone document, but the issue with the ADUs, a lot of the time, they're an afterthought. So we, we allow the housing unit, somebody builds a barn, somebody has a barn existing and then they said, hey, I can rent it out, I'm gonna convert it to a dwelling unit. And then we as fire services don't know that that's where somebody lives. So we look at a risk profile when we go to a fire and typically an ag building, a barn, an outbuilding, we don't look at that as an occupied structure. So we don't send firefighters in high-risk environments, potential collapse, because we think that it's just an ag building. But we know there are some out there, barns that have been converted to housing units, where we should be taking higher risk to save lives and we don't see that. So there, there are intricacies with ADUs and conversions of existing structures that aren't addressed through planning and zoning. Whether they're illegal ADUs or whether they're afterthought. And then we have, again, the increased traffic, the access for vehicles back to those structures, even the identification of those structures from an addressing standpoint. So if they call and they say, I have a fire at three eighty-one North Main and we get there and there's a, an outbuilding on fire, is that a living structure? Do we have separate addresses so we know which building to go to? And, and there becomes a lot of intricacies in public safety with ADUs. Your, your language here, considering housing options, I think is good language for a general plan. But as we address, and I think this workshop, as we start to address the specifics of allowing ADUs, how we designate them, how we zone them, how we plan for them, and how we enforce codes with them, really need to be looked at specifically. So the I's and T's versus the general statement from the plan.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to just refer back to the airport area, which the planning commission felt to leave the, not necessarily provide a recommendation, but to suggest to council that what was at one point anticipated to be planned industrial around the entire airport, including this west side area, to perhaps scale that back to leave this portion as agriculture in the future land use map, so as to not perhaps drive over speculation in an area that has quite a few low-lying kind of wet areas and difficult to serve areas. So if your preference was option B, you could state as such in a motion versus A.
Between Millville and Nibley and Logan, wasn't that reaching out to the airport on that industrial rezon thing that we talked about, that Sean Mill presented? Anyone talking about? Wasn't that bringing in some of this?
I can't remember.
Do you remember that, Barbara? Last year, we talked about where Maloof is, making that, and I forget the term, so that they could do industrial parts. Yes, CRA. Isn't that touching this here from, wasn't that coming out by the airport as well?
On the north Logan side, right?
Yeah.
On the east side.
East side and so.
Yeah.
Another CRA development plan over there.
Near there is what I thought.
It's on the east side, I believe, isn't it?
I, I think that's a wonderful example of what could be added to the regional collaboration mapping, so that there's awareness of where that is. But my understanding is this area is Hyde Park City's future annexation area, but it's currently not anticipated for development, given that the infrastructure is limited and difficult to extend to. And there's these low-lying, wetland, wet area issues. I don't have that specific area to show on a map, to answer your question.
But we're near there, right?
Yeah, this is the west side of the airport.
Okay.
Do you wanna ask Sean Mill? He probably knows exactly where it is.
I just wanna clarify, councilman. It was from the east side and did not trans across the west.
Thank you.
Part of that, the north Logan area and all that, remember that? Okay, other comments, questions?
Are we gonna make a decision on that A, option A or B around the airport? Do we, like, we need to specify one or the other before we pass the general plan?
That's part of a motion would be suggested, yes.
Go back to A again. What'd you say, A? Put that back up there, right there.
A is to keep it industrial, or B would be to keep it agricultural.
Now, how did that come up?
So this was.
Because of the, as far as the wetlands designation or?
It's a very good question.
Everything can be mitigated.
Yeah, so this came up as actually a rezon request that, you see this highlighted property that's kind of the solid yellow line? That came to the planning commission as a rezon application. And at the same time, the general plan was being considered for action, for potential recommendation to the council. And so that provided some context of, well, what about these noise contours and the, the impacts of flights and the typical pattern of development around airports to have continuous light industrial uses? And not necessarily have a kind of intermixed pattern of residential and industrial. And so this was brought to the planning commission and they felt that this would be a worthwhile modification to the future land use map. But then after the hearing, there was a property owner within this area that preferred not to have their future land use map show as industrial. And then we learned that there were some difficulties for serving the area with development and that maybe it was not time to promote it as industrial and to keep it agricultural, given that this majority of owners seem to prefer agriculture for now. And so the planning commission discussed it and felt that you as council could go either way and that they, they'd support either decision.
How many different landowners are in that area, main area? I mean, because the part you pointed out, we did, the planning and zoning did change it to industrial, right?
They did. They recommended, and then we, we had a follow-up discussion and they just felt that the council could weigh it and decide either way.
Well, 'cause if we heard from one landowner that he would rather agricultural, I would like to know how many landowners are there or what's theirs, so that we're giving voice to them as well.
Heard from two property owners. The number, I'll just have to look up here. Find that for you in just a moment. Looks like around ten? Eight to ten. I don't have an exact number at the moment. Matt, would you like to call?
If I may, we don't have very many places on our general plan where we actually highlight where we're looking to have industrial development. So when this was changed from agricultural to industrial, I'd be, I'm one of the ones who said, you don't have any infrastructure there. You don't have a main road, you don't have all these things. So it's probably better for us not to highlight an area saying we want industrial development in this area where we can't currently, as a county, serve that.
And then let the process.
And let the process. So if this does start to develop into industrial, then let's come back and let's paint this, let's paint this area different. But let's not paint it knowing that we can't service it with sewer, water, fire, roads. I mean, there is no roads there, so. From an engineering standpoint, I don't think this is a good place for us to, to, to make a mark. If we wanna find some industrial areas, let's put them by roads that can service industrial, where we have some services that are close to other parts, right? There is, this isn't close to another city currently, so I would recommend the council put this back to agricultural and let development maybe put pressure on us to rezon it instead of us highlighting it for rezon or for industrial uses when we, we currently can't service it, so.
Very good point. Thank you.
And just to clarify, option B is actually leaving it the way it is currently zoned.
And then let the process take care of it from there. That's how I.
Thank you for that discussion.
As far as accepting this plan, we took the word dwelling out. We're going with moderate income housing plan, right?
Correct.
And based on what I've heard from chief and Matt, I can, and as long as Dirk is sitting here saying we can amend it, change it down the road, I'm leaning towards saying, okay, but I'd like to know why we need it tonight.
You seem to be very anxious. Have you got something planned here?
Well, I sent an email out, I think it was January, to the council members, talking about, just that we've had it for so long, but also there are grants that are associated with the, Tim, can you explain that? It was grants associated with our, what's it called, consultants.
Let's mean there's been good discussion as we've sat through this and, I mean, tonight, how many points did we refine in that? And if, if we're sitting and doing that with planning and zoning, I don't wanna skip grants, but I don't wanna rush because we can say we're done.
Yeah, just, we are past the deadline of a grant that expired end of December, twenty twenty-two, and we're kind of in the, the grace period, working with the state to report and finalize. And so the consultants are waiting for the final adopted plan to make the changes, deliver and then send us the final invoice and bill against the grant. I think we're working with the state to, the grant source managers to, they're, they're understanding. And then the next one expires end of March, the other grant, I should say. And I think also it's just about staff focus and time with many other things to do, but it's been great discussion. I definitely agree. Appreciate that.
I just wondered if we had a big, huge press release all typed up for tomorrow and, you know, and we were gonna have some big hoopla and cake and ice cream with it, so, okay.
We might do that.
You wanna do that? Some would. So, any other questions?
My opinion is that the general plan, I like the changes that have been made and a general plan is more of a general plan. We don't wanna get too much detail into it. That's for code and to, and it sounds like we can really work with, you know, the fire and the roads and everybody and codify some of those, those specific issues, but. and the roads and everybody and codify some of those specific issues, but I feel like the general plan is acceptable to me. I like the way it looks, and I think that, I don't see, for me personally, I don't have a problem passing it tonight, because I feel confident that we can. And as we go through and codify those other things and go through the code, if there's something then that is glaring that we need to amend this, we can. But I think the best place for those details is in code, not in a general plan.
I want, yeah, I want process. I want process to actually designate, to be basically, to be the value thing rather than general plan. You know, that we, that everything's set so that protects everybody, so that people do have those private property rights, you know. If it doesn't exactly adhere to the general plan, they can still, if planning, zoning, that process is all set up, that they go through that, we can still make alterations if we have to. So, okay. Any other questions? You guys are way too reverent.
Reverent?
Yeah.
Talking way too much.
Anyone want to?
Yeah.
Is that a motion?
Yeah. I'll move, Mr. Chair, to approve ordinance 2023-05.
With the adoption of?
With the adoption of, well, isn't that just leave it the way it's supposed to, the way it currently is?
I think if you state option B as presented.
Option B as presented. Thank you.
And all the other changes that we've seen.
I'd second that.
Moving seconded, that we adopt, what was it again?
General.
Ordinance 2023-05. With all the changes which were included, along with option B for that one series of property that was looked at, is there any discussion? Hearing none, see the vote. Are you ready to dance down there, Dirk? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
And I'll say nay for now. But it's still four to two. I'd like to bet a little bit more, but that's fine. We will move it.
So call. Thank you, Council.
Call the party.
Thank you for your effort and for taking the time to meet with me.
Absolutely. Look forward to more work together.
Let's go to 12A, the review of the Stokes Nature Center annexation to Nibley City. Who has that? Oh, you're back up here?
Can we turn on the lights?
Let there be light.
I should not have unplugged.
Unless the glare comes back, we'll find out.
Council, I just want to put your minds at ease as your clerk. I think it's important to mention, just very briefly, there's no vote that can bind you, not even your own vote. So you could vote tonight one way, and in the future, change your mind and change it, so you can't even bind yourself into a vote. So I think that's just important for all of your votes now and in the future. Don't be afraid to vote just because you can't be bound.
Oh, remember that. Sorry, I had other thoughts go through my head. So.
I have a question on this, Tim. I know you're getting ready on this, but on the conclusions, on page two, it says unincorporated peninsula area resulting from the Baker annexation to the city of Hyde Park.
Yeah, that's a carryover that shouldn't have been there, so that would need to be corrected.
So we are talking about Nibley, correct? Okay.
Correct, thank you, and I apologize for that.
Thank you. I thought there was a big boundary going on there. That's a big peninsula. Yeah.
All right, so this is the highlighted area that is the peninsula, but otherwise, the majority of the property going into Nibley City, and it's just really a result of this little parcel that another property owner is not necessarily interested in annexing into Nibley City at this time. So because of that peninsula, it requires the county and the city to agree to an annexation that results in a peninsula. But we, as a county, in our analysis of this, don't see a negative impact to county services.
But it is attached to other county properties, and I know that the peninsula is currently owned by the same person who has land that's already annexed into the other.
Yeah, and the history, I don't know exactly how and why it became a small little parcel.
Neither here nor there, but.
Yep.
Is that number three on conclusion, is a part of that one?
Let's see. The owner of this property could petition to annex into Nibley City for future, yep. But I believe the other part of that property is already annexed to a different city, isn't it?
Let's take a look here.
Nope, it's already in Nibley City. Her, the remaining of that property already is in Nibley City, so, okay. But yet, you know, it's not an island. I know we don't like peninsulas and everything coming down the road, and wouldn't likely it'll probably be in Nibley City anyway, if you have Nibley City on both, on three of the sides.
Yeah, the islands or peninsulas that are most concerning is when there's a remnant road that's not brought into a city, and we're left with servicing, and the impact to the county is negative.
But if we go to the west of that property, if we start leaving an island, then we'll have to say, then we'll have to fight it and say, no, you take it all. So, any questions on that? Anymore?
No.
Guess they would like our blessing.
It could be that motion to agree, or?
I was going to say, we usually don't have to take a vote on this.
I've seen it both ways, but I think it's, yeah.
I see no problem, as long as there's not an island and there's something existing, we'll let them, we'll let them develop accordingly.
I'll agree with that.
Anyone else? Any dissenting, or you want to say anything different? Okay.
Thank you.
That being said, let's go to other business. Any changes to those participation in those events?
I just have a, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm still trying to see if the building conference works within my thing, but don't know yet.
Micah, are you registering us for all of these, or are we registering ourselves?
I'm registering you.
Awesome.
So far, names on here, you've taken care of all of that?
I have registered the four listed there for the building conference.
Okay.
The management conference registration just opened up.
Awesome.
I haven't done that yet, but I will do that within the next couple of days.
Okay, thank you, Micah, for doing all that.
The WIR.
I haven't seen, they haven't opened up that one.
Okay. Awesome, thank you.
Sandy, you asked about the agenda.
I saw it, I actually saw it.
Okay, yeah, the Building Utah Conference ends up like 1:30 on that, the last, whatever.
On the fifth.
And then if you would, also request if you're staying down there, that you'd also be able to, I don't know, it depends on where's he going to actually have us, what kind of motels do you actually go for?
So I've got the.
Roach coach.
Roach coach.
Depends which one of you. I put Dave.
Whether he likes you or not.
There you go, Will.
For the Building Utah Conference, it's at the Hilton, which is right next to the, the other one starts the name.
Hyatt?
Hyatt.
I think it's a Hilton.
Is it Hilton?
I think it is.
Okay. It's right next to the conference center.
Yeah.
So you should be able to build a water right over there. And then, and then if you need to stay in Salt Lake City for the management conference, let me know. I'm guessing that probably would be easiest.
I'm going to drive back and forth, so I'm okay with that.
Those two days, I'd be driving back and forth myself.
Okay, yeah, Hilton Garden, that's right.
I want to stay in Salt Lake, I don't want to drive.
Okay, let's go council member reports. We'll start down here to Dr. Beus.
Yeah. I had the opportunity to sit in on the interviews for the new CJC director, and I really enjoyed that. We had really good candidates, but the choice was obvious, and I think they're all really excited to work with him. Are we saying who it is, or?
Next month.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, I was planning on.
So I hope they said yes.
Yeah.
Said yes, and I was planning on introducing him with Terrell at the next council meeting.
Good.
Yeah, so thank you for letting me invite me. I really enjoyed that. And then also, I think that's it. Can't remember.
If you think of.
If I think, we'll run it back. Thank you.
Nolan? We have another meeting with the Cash Waste Consortium this Thursday. The company that has been talked to would like to come and present to both the city and the county, so I'm seeing if you guys would want to hear his presentation, so you know what's going to be going on from garbage collection in the county. So he's offered that. I think it would be good, so that the council is aware of what's going to be happening on the garbage collection, so.
It'd be good.
I think that's going on, and Dave and I attended a water meeting this past week, which I think has some huge things coming down the pipeline for us as a county that we need to be talking about, and also.
Is that one from this week?
Yes. Oh, you were there too, yes, sorry, Mark. So I was shocked at the things they were saying they're going to do there, so I've already written a few politicians with my not liking of the plan, because I don't think they've listened to the citizens, but. And then also the planning and zoning, I hope we get something set up with the council and the planning and zoning and meeting and talking about some of these things we've been going over. So that's my side. Barbara?
All right, first of all, you should have all received on your packets, the budget calendar amendment calendar and, what's the other one here? Oh, budget adoption calendar. So please take a look at this. We are being dedicated to follow this as closely as we can and have our monthly meetings on this. The only issue that Cameron discussed that might be a little bit changed is November, is it the November they were talking about making the change, because Craig McAllister wants a week?
October.
October. He wants a week earlier for mailing deadlines, so we will maybe look at that. But please keep this handy. Micah, I've asked Micah to send out the meeting minutes to all of you on that, and so you will be receiving those, so you can keep informed of what we're talking about on the budget and audit, both. Any questions on any of this? Have you had a chance to look at it or anything? We're just glad we're having meetings on this and trying to keep going on this. I know there's, I've been serving on some of the UAC steering committees, and I've really enjoyed that, because it's helped me a lot to keep informed of what's going on and makes me understand things more. And of course, one of the big things is the receiving center and what's going to happen there, and I'm going to make myself more knowledgeable with that. I'm also, I'm already setting up a meeting, meeting with Catherine Rhodes down with UAC, so that she can give me some more information. And then David Erickson and I are going to be meeting with Beth. I've sent her an email, and she got back with me, but we haven't had a chance to set up the date yet. So we will want her to know that as a council, we're completely behind them on setting that up and giving them full power over, or I don't know if power is the word I want to use, but control over that receiving center. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Mark?
Nolan and Barbara mentioned a couple of the things that I was going to talk about, so just in addition to the general plan discussion, again, I felt meeting with Tim was very valuable for me to get more familiar with the county's planning office, and just want to extend an additional thank you and expression of gratitude for your efforts there in educating me as well as hearing my concerns. And plug that county services for planning are available to any community that wants to reach out for some guidance. I think it's a good thing in the, in the sense that they can help the overall plan for what we want County to become, actually materialize, and appreciate that, Tim. And then the, I've found it beneficial to participate at both, both virtually and in person at the UAC meetings down at the Capitol, and I wondered if there was any, if we would have an in-person presence going into the last week, you know, on this Thursday, or is there, is there anything specific with, that we should be concerned with as a group that may not have been fully vetted yet? I haven't heard of anything, so that's partly why I'm asking, is just, if there is something I'm unaware that we're.
I asked Micah about SB 174. I think that has dramatic impact to the county, and I have written and asked if that affects county versus municipality, and I haven't heard back.
I actually just said, you know, for this meeting, I did, it does affect counties.
Holy flip.
It does. It limits the, it only applies to subdivision decisions, so it's not zoning decisions. So it's, and it applies to subdivisions, subdivision of property for single, double, or town homes, so, and would allow the Planning and Zoning Commission one hearing, and if it meets the conditions of, that are set out in county code and state code, then the Planning Commission must grant a preapproval, but it doesn't require it to grant the final approval. There's still a may.
What bill is that, Nolan?
SB 174.
So it wouldn't come before us for final approval, or would it?
No.
No. No. Takes out the legislative.
That bill is, last I saw it was in the House Rules Committee. It'll probably, my guess is if the bill is still alive, then it will probably be signed, it'll probably be put on the, just straight onto the House second reading calendar here.
Which I wonder how we help our citizens in one meeting with, this goes back to, I think we need to talk about, the 300-foot boundary as far as noticing on this.
Yeah.
Because I really.
That's not enough.
Huh?
That's not enough. The 300-foot, yeah.
It's not. That's what I'm saying.
It's not nearly enough. Especially in the county.
One hearing, this passes, and the poor person who didn't happen to read Thursday's paper is up the creek. So that's my concern, is how this affects citizens, and the fact that.
On both sides.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And then the fact that it just took the council out of any acknowledgement of that or study or anything else, too.
I'm trying to figure out what it even leaves for the council in the bill.
Doesn't leave much.
Yeah, it doesn't, doesn't seem.
And didn't you say UAC was supportive of this?
I, I thought they were neutral on it. I do know that the League of Cities and Towns is supportive of it. The League was a big part of the negotiations leading up to the bill's creation. I don't know how much UAC was involved.
League full of developers?
Yes. You can see that being moved, yes, that's, that's my concern. Yeah. Okay. Anything, Mark, that's it?
Thank you.
Okay.
I was, yesterday morning, I was in a chamber legislative committee meeting, and we got to speak to representatives of Senator Romney, Senator Lee, and Representative Moore about their new committee assignments in Washington DC and some of their legislation that they're bringing forward personally, each of those legislators. And so it was really interesting, and I would encourage all of you to maybe get a look at websites and see what they're doing on behalf of Utah, just not so much for our county, but it really was, some of it is to do with, actually, there was one bill that Senator, I think it's Senator Romney was trying to do a northern Utah, like a Bear River area that would almost be like, not a national park, but a recreation area that we could bring more tourism, more dollars.
Is that the heritage?
Yes. Yeah, and so there's, there's a lot of. Yes. Yeah, and so there's, there's a lot of things going on there that, that might affect us.
Just don't call it Bear's Ears.
No, Bear River, not Bear's Ears. The Utah Land Institute, Nolan and I were at that meeting. That was so interesting and learned a lot about transfer of development rights and how that might come up as we go into some of this moderate income housing. It's gonna be a big deal, and I was glad to be able to have that better understanding. And then yesterday, the audit committee meeting, it was just so interesting. Jess, I don't know if you directed Kate to do this or if Kate just did this for us, but there, she did an audit of every asset owned by the county, every piece of property owned by the county, and it's in a published form, it's on our website. You could go in and see, and she was very clear about this one has issues with, you know, it was recorded so long ago, it wasn't recorded correctly. This one has a boundary dispute. These are all clear, and, and it just gives us an idea, like we might have some surplus properties. And it, and it just is an overall inventory of every property that the county owns. And I think that was really timely and a, a good thing to be done. I thought it was really helpful.
Thank you. The UAC policy committees, I think, are continuing. So if you're, if you've signed on to any of those, they will be continuing. I think that has been extremely positive to, as far as the, being able to react timely to changes and have, actually have input and prevent some things that are harmful. I think they've been extremely effective. So if you're still on those, try to stick with those, especially in interim, there's gonna be, you know, some, I think there's, some of them are going to be meeting before then too. So appreciate that. We need to make sure, and this will have to go back to the executive, we need board members for Board of Adjustments and Planning and Zoning. Uh, we have not been presented any names for quite a while for those, and I think it's putting us at risk on some things. And so, and if he's wanting names from us, you know, if you have some that will serve on that, I, matter of fact, I don't know whether we even have a functioning Board of Adjustment right now because all the terms are expired. And that's, you know, we shouldn't even be doing, that's, that's daily business stuff. Anyway, and then I know there's a lot of snow out there. You know, we're blessed, but I have had some of the mayors that have reached out to me wondering if, if there was going to be any kind of a place that they could, for sandbags, sandbagging or something like that available, especially a lot of the small towns, and see if anything was going to be spearheaded by the county or if it would just be by city. So if, if we have something, it would be good to advertise it, get that out of there, not to cause panic, but, you know, just preparation will mean saving a lot of property.
You got any comment on that, Matt?
He's, he's back there shaking his head like I know everything again. And you do.
I don't know everything, but we are working on that. I am meeting with Executive Zook tomorrow to discuss that plan in a little more detail, along with Will Lusk. So we, he's been around for a long time, he's great at planning, we've reached out to some of the cities. The county is, is fairly prepared, but it's the cities that we worry about, so we are gonna try to reach out to the cities, but that plan should be coming forth.
Hey, can you, sorry, can you reach out to Sheriff Jensen? Cause we were at the Budget Committee yesterday. Didn't he say something about sheriff had some bags and sand or was ready in front of his office?
I think that would probably be Will, so we have containers with bags and we even spoke with Will today. You know, we have like seventy thousand bags, so, and the communities have different things. It's just trying to remind, and it's the small communities, but we wanna.
That's, that's the ones that have been reaching out.
No, we want to find locations. We don't want someone to have to drive all the way from Cornish to Hiram to fill a sandbag and then drive back to Cornish. So we're trying to find the locations. From Public Works, we do plan on putting a map so that if someone is looking to where they can go find some sandbags, that it's, that we have resources for them, whether that be, you know, in Nibley, whether that be in Logan, wherever it may be, they can still see those resources so that someone in Richmond doesn't feel like they can't come to the county to get something, or someone that's right outside of Richmond doesn't feel like they can't go to the county. But, so we, we are looking at that.
Past, have there been public days where a bunch of people get together and just bag some up so they're sitting there?
I don't want to spoil our plan too much, Nolan, but if we, if we go back, if we, you know, there would be some kind of community event, but generally, we haven't participated in going to fill the sandbags because then someone will come by and they'll take your sandbag. So, you know, it's kind of like the.
If we pour it, they'll take it, huh?
Correct. So a lot of times, we're providing the bags, we provide the sand, we provide the shovel, and then from there, getting the sand into the bag is, is kind of the responsibility of the people who need them. That way, they take what they need, they don't just come and take, you know, a whole bunch and then they don't use them. So we don't, we're not gonna go back and collect those sandbags either, so we're not gonna deliver, we're not gonna go out and collect them. You know, so we're providing those resources and then it's, you know, the landowners need to be the stewards and the homeowners need to be the stewards to, to take the steps to come and get those sandbags, so.
I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Dave, can I just say, when Catherine and I went out to the Sheriff's Department and we met with Will Lusk, who is the emergency manager, he gave, he gave each of us a document that he's prepared that kind of outlines if there is an emergency, what are our specific duties as a county council? What will they be looking to us to do? I think it would be a good idea to have him come to a meeting and give a presentation to us. And probably this would be an opportune time as we might be looking at some flooding and, and we don't know when those emergencies will happen. But he, he's prepared and he's got some documents that kind of are germane to us specifically.
Don't we have a yearly emergency training?
Yeah, I'd say we participated in two of them so far.
Okay, see, I'm new, so.
I think.
Never mind.
Well, did he say if there's one scheduled for this time?
He said he wanted to.
Yeah, I think he'd like to address us, but you could maybe check with him and see what's appropriate or.
That's helpful, cause then we did sit and fill our roles and whatever else.
Does the county usually do that training around the Great Shakeout or the Utah Shakeout?
It could be any one of those things.
Any one of them.
Is he, I'm asking.
We've, we've done them at different times.
Except for most cities.
We've done it at different times and, which it, it is good to, you know, you learn those roles because, you know, it takes county councils to release a lot of funds.
Yeah.
And that would be, that's really our primary reason that we.
Measures that we could have.
Right.
Qualify for additional funding from the state and the federal government.
Declaration of Emergency.
And, and Will is real good in getting that lined up and stuff, he's really good at that. So we'll, yeah, we'll reach out to him on that.
Dave, I'm just looking at that SB one seventy-four. It doesn't show that the, that UAC has taken a stand one way or another on that unless this hasn't been updated. I don't know.
There was a lot of discussion about that, though. I do know that. There's a lot of discussion.
We were encouraged not to vote because that meant we continued to monitor.
I think it was the ownership of the bill and how things, I don't know, just set politics aside and make a decision. Anyway, but it's the reality of it, and I think that's what they were talking about a lot was not wanting to step on any kind of toes and.
Based on namesake.
Yeah, so, well, anyway, there's prob, there's reasons where it is, why it is right now, I think.
Yeah.
But that's the politics of it, so, okay, uh, have you thought of your?
No, I can't remember. Sorry.
Okay, no. I, I, I got kind of a question here, and since we have our auditor here, I know the auditor that was hired out of Missouri.
Correct, yeah.
Uh, or do we cannot hire local or use in-house, or why do we go clear to Missouri? Cause I would think that would be a lot more expensive. I know she's good, but that'd be a lot more expensive than if we maybe gave some patronage to something where money was probably spent locally.
Yeah. I think as far as staffing goes, I think I've learned my lesson on that. I'd be willing to go into an executive session to discuss hiring of personnel. But I, I want you to have full confidence, she's the best in the industry.
And I look at, I looked at a lot of those audits and I, I thought, man, a lot of those could be done by what staff we have. To save us.
Are you volunteering to do the audit? Cause Will, have you come over and help us out?
No, I, I think that we have a deputy auditor that's.
Yeah, that's what's gonna ask.
Could have dug into any of those, but she's never even been talked to or even approached, so.
That's not her role.
As a deputy auditor.
The deputy auditor, she's not a deputy auditor. You're talking about a tax administration supervisor. So that's outside the purview of job description. We could talk about all of this in an executive session. I'd be more than happy.
Well, that's my question, though, is, you know, this is the public's business, I just wanted to ask it, so. Okay, that was, that's all I had. Is anything else? Okay, we will be adjourned.
Don't we move to executive session?
There is no executive session. It's on there, but it, there's nothing next to it, unless you guys want to, go ahead.
I'm so happy not to.
So.